And I'm the Director for Cook County's Department of Planning and Development. And you have logged on to what we have titled CDBGDR Public Hearing, which stands for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Version Public Hearing. So I want to thank everyone who's joined us this evening in person and online. And Mayor Denson wanted to apologize. He was here a moment ago, but was just called out on emergencies. So we want to thank him for sharing his facilities with us. Sorry, dropped the clicker. And without other ado, we'll just get started. So this evening, we're going to be sharing with you what CDBGDR is. We're going to discuss the disaster impacts. What are the unmet needs and consequences that we're required to evaluate? How that translates into a budget for programs and projects that can repair and help us recover from the floods Cook County experienced in 2023 and in 2024. And then we're going to share a little bit about the programs ideas that we're thinking about using this funding for, the timeline and the next steps. And then most importantly, encourage your participation in sharing your comments and questions with us. So let's just get started. In December, Cook County learned that we were going to be receiving an allocation. We didn't know the size. We didn't know from whom, which federal agency. But in January, when the Federal Register was published, we learned that we were receiving quite a sizable allocation of funds, $244 million plus to assist the county in recovering from those natural disasters of thunderstorms and tornadoes. So the first thing that we have to do in order to secure that funding for Cook County, I know there's been some question in curiosity about how we, are we sure we're going to receive this money or not? But we know we're not going to get it if we don't submit an action plan. So the first thing we have to do is prepare what HUD calls an action plan, which is really an outline for how we envision spending this fund, this funding on programs and projects and based on the needs that were documented by FEMA and the SBA and insurance companies when these disasters hit. So this visual here shows you all of the steps that one has to go through to create an action plan. And we are down at the bottom, hooray, between step seven and eight. And we intend to submit this action plan with your comments at the end of August. So first of all, I just wanted to give you a little bit of who we are. Why not advance these slides? Just wanted anyone to say anything, please. Okay, let's catch up on the slides, pardon me. Who are we? Maybe I should start with who am I? No, who are we? Cook County's Department of Planning and Development is one of the three departments in Cook County's Bureau of Economic Development. The other two are Building and Zoning and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this graphic here just shows you what the Bureau's mission is, how we envision doing our work, and what are the four pillars that we organize our projects and programs around. We do things for residents. We have programs for businesses. We do community and systematic change on a larger scale than block level. And so this slide here, this slide here actually shows you the website that the CDBGDR funding is located on, just showing it to you so that when you go to click after scanning the QR code at the end of this presentation, you'll know if you're at the right spot because you'll recognize it. But today, our purpose is to hold a public hearing. And during the month of July, after completing the action plan, we put notice in the newspapers, letting everyone know that we have received this funding and an action plan was online available for their rizzle and comment. So we are seeking four things today. We want you to ask questions about our goals for the CDBG funding. We want you to understand what unmet need means and why it's important and why we look at it to begin with. We want you to provide comments and then respond to the action plan in writing, if you can, so that we can send your comments along to HUD when we submit the document. So the next question would be, what are CDBGDR funds? Well, I'll abbreviate, but you can read the slide later because this will be available online. And oh, I did forget to mention that this meeting will be recorded. And so you will be able to see or share with your neighbors and friends the information you hear tonight by going to our website. So what are CDBG funds? In response to the extraordinary natural disasters that we experienced a couple of years ago, Congress sometimes appropriates additional funding and they send it through HUD through the CDBG program. So how can it be used? There are numerous ways that you can use this funding. You can build housing. You can build roads. You can root sewer systems. There are social services that it can fund. And it also can meet whatever other needs may remain after FEMA and the SBA came in at the time of the disaster to assist. And that is one of the things we're hoping that you'll help us understand in your community. So the next slide shows five key areas of CDBGDR spending and the type of programs that it can fund. As I mentioned, there are a number of housing programs, new construction, rehab, buyout, acquisition. There are programs for businesses. There are programs to assist districts. And then also there are the usual suspects of programs that everyone needs, infrastructure and community facility improvements, as well as doing planning work so that communities don't experience the same disasters whenever they hit next. What might be an eligible activity? Eligible activities are activities that reach, that meet HUD's national objectives for their community development block grant funding, things such as benefiting low to moderate income households. And I might add that 70% of this grant must be spent on projects and programs that benefit low to moderate income households, areas, eliminate slum and blight, and also address an urgent need if relevant. Also, other eligible categories include that 15% of the grant funds have to be used on activities that reduce the future risk of this happening. We call that mitigation. And also, they must be spent in what's considered a most impacted distressed area or A-Mid. We love our acronyms. So in our case, all of Cook County, including the city of Chicago and the village of Cicero, who each received their own grants, is considered A-Mid, which means that we can spend this funding anywhere throughout the county. It would be considered eligible if it meets the other criteria. These are just some pictures to remind us of the disasters that we had. Some of us have seen those again more recently. But I'm going to turn the clicker over to Chris Narducci from ICF. He's with our team that's helping us put this together. And he's going to walk us through what unmet needs are and what are some of the considerations to keep in mind for consequences of those unmet needs.
Thank you so much, Susan. So I'm Chris Narducci. I'm working with the county on developing their action plan. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the unmet needs analysis that was conducted to sort of assess the needs of the county and to make decisions about what the priorities are for both recovery and disaster risk reduction. As part of the CDBGDR grant, HUD requires grantees to Cook County to do an analysis, collect information from multiple sources to understand how the disaster impacted the community and what the remaining needs are. So in order to do this, we gathered information from federal, state, and local sources. We collected data from FEMA, SBA, the Small Business Administration. We collect information about flood insurance, census and ACS data, also information from the Public Housing Authority, the Emergency Management and Regional Security Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. We looked at the Hazard Mitigation Plan and also conducted a survey of community leaders in order to assess need. This is a work in progress, and I want to emphasize that point. We've collected a lot of information, but there is always an opportunity to collect more. So this public comment period is, you know, a continued opportunity for the county to collect additional information, which is why it's really important to respond and provide feedback and comments on this action plan so that the county can learn more about what the needs are and adjust the allocations appropriately. So I'm going to go into a little bit about the unmet needs categories. It includes housing, infrastructure, economic development, public services generally. So again, the unmet needs analysis is an understanding of not what the impact was necessarily, but what the remaining needs are. We know that that disaster's happened in '23 and '24. Folks have been able to get resources from a multiple range of, you know, assistance and disaster aid. CDBGDR, this grant comes in at the end to kind of make households and communities whole to fill that gap. So we have to understand what is left in the recovery process. And this unmet needs analysis, as required by HUD, is supposed to inform how the programs work and where money is allocated. So this first, this first map is sort of an understanding of FEMA individual assistance. As some of you may know, after disaster, FEMA will come in and they will provide assistance to communities and to households. The Individual Assistance Program offers assistance to individual households impacted by the disaster. So what we did was we gathered information from FEMA with regard to these three disasters, and we mapped it out to kind of see where do people live that apply for disaster assistance. And what the map shows us is that there were a lot of concentrated impacts of the disaster in South counties, zip codes, and jurisdictions. So that really shows us kind of where the impacts were concentrated. And this is something that kind of is informing our understanding of where, you know, where the programs might be directed. Also important, though, is an understanding of where disasters have impacted the county historically. So this map is a little bit different. It's individual assistance applications from, for FEMA assistance going back to 2007. So this is showing just a long, you know, almost 20 years of disaster impact in the county. And again, we see a lot of the flood impacts because most of these disasters were flooding, have then impacted communities in the southern portion of the county. I wanted to talk a little bit about another effort that the county has done to collect information from communities about what their needs are. We developed a community needs survey, and we sent this out to leadership across municipalities throughout the county. Leadership had the opportunity to provide information about what their needs are. And we were able to analyze this and understand better what, what community leaders are seeing in their respective neighborhoods. One of the most important findings that came out of that was that almost nine in 10 leaders who responded to the survey identified infrastructure as one of the highest priorities for funding. I think that, you know, the impacts of the flooding have emphasized that there's an ongoing issue with infrastructure failing to manage floodwaters when it comes down in the form of torrential downpours. So that was a very common response. And most respondents see that as a remaining unmet need in their communities. Talk a little bit about housing unmet need as well. So I want to emphasize that this is based only on FEMA and SBA data, so federal sources of information. We have recently received more updated data from HUD to better understand what the needs of households is. But this reflects kind of the first data that we were able to get. We took all of the assistance that homes received from FEMA and SBA and also an estimate of the insurance proceeds that folks got and calculated that there's about $20 million in remaining unmet need across the county. Again, this, this is subject to an updated data analysis, which will be coming shortly. We analyzed economic need as well. This is based on Small Business Administration information, which provides loans following a disaster. SBA does inspections of businesses to better understand what the damages were and then provides loans. And we calculated that, at least based on this data alone, there wasn't much unmet need for businesses. Another, another data source that we used was the county's Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is something that the county produces every few years, working across the county and with its partners to understand, you know, what are the risks of the community and what should be prioritized as far as reducing the probability of a disaster that impacts homes and communities going forward. This is also an eligible use of the funding. And the highest priority types of risks are floods, severe weather, winter storms, tornado, and drought. So this factors into what the county thinks about as far as a priority for funding. So this is sort of a summary of the data that we got. And just to walk through it very quickly, on the left side, you see cost categories of different areas that are in need following the disaster. The next column is verified losses. So, you know, taking the best data that we had, what is the, what was the impact of the disaster on emergency shelters, rental housing, owner occupied housing, public housing, infrastructure, economic development, and public services? We see that the total is close to $1 billion. The financial assistance received from FEMA, SBA, insurance, and the local level, we add those up as well. And then we take all of what is remaining, and that's how we come up with about $250 million. This is subject, again, to revision if we get more information. And now Susan is going to talk a little bit about how this unmet needs assessment has influenced the county's decisions about where to put funding.
Thank you, Chris. So what is our overall budget? The drum roll, please. HUD requires that the grant funds are to be allocated and aligned where the needs are identified. So the county's used the information that's collected that you just heard Chris present and use that as our foundation for building a budget for the entire grant. As we mentioned, that we have an allocation of $244 million, and $244 million, $162,000, excuse me. And we have about six years to spend it. So we need to make certain that however we allocate this funding, that we're able to leverage it so we can go farther and that we're able to spend it on eligible projects so we don't waste time making them eligible if HUD feels that they were not the proper use of the money. So the categories, the cost categories that you just reviewed, that you just saw with Chris, actually translate into a program. And as you heard us say, we found a lot of unmet, the unmet need that we found fell into two categories primarily, housing, infrastructure. Then also, we added a category called planning work to help us with mitigation, to make sure that we're doing things in a way that will not yield a repeat performance of the disaster. And then, of course, we have admin dollars, which HUD allows so that we can administer the funding in a really timely way. The housing programs that you see before you here are split to make sure that we're addressing rental housing as well as homeowner housing. Most of you, or some of you may not know that the county received a similar grant from HUD in 2014. And we were told by HUD at that time that we were very short on affordable housing throughout the county and that we needed to build as much as we could so that affordable housing could also be resilient housing and withstand any other disaster that was forthcoming. So we knew that was going to be an area that we would need to spend some funding on this time around as well. But of course, infrastructure is a large need because of the, what you just heard Chris share with you, the volume of rain that we're receiving now. We're not just getting a 10-year storm every 10 years. We're getting a 10-year storm every year, maybe. Is that right, Rich? We don't know. And then, of course, we want to be, because we are the Department of Planning, we want to make sure that we're doing plans as well that help guide us because sometimes this work lasts longer than the people who are in office or the people that are in our department maybe around. And a plan would help ensure that we're addressing the impacts and the needs where they exist. So what are some of the actual planned activities that we have in store?
Just wanted to talk in a little bit more detail about the programs that are, the county has currently allocated funds to. These are broken out into planning, housing, and infrastructure, as Susan mentioned. So first, under planning, two distinct programs. We think it's very important to first analyze and understand what the needs are. We've done a little bit of that, but we need to do more work to precisely understand, you know, what the risks are, what communities would benefit most, and how to strategically allocate the funds to specific infrastructure and housing. So the Strategic Flood Mitigation Plan is an opportunity to do that. It will be a program that allocates money to build on existing plans in Cook County. The county will procure a planning firm to conduct analysis and work with communities and research past plans, all so that the county can strategically allocate the CDBGDR funds. So this will actually inform how the housing programs work and where they are located and how the infrastructure program works and where those projects will be located. The second planning program is actually working with individual communities to come up with a hazard risk resilience plan. So the county will fund a planning firm to work directly with several communities in the county to do their own individualized plans. We expect this to tie into the Strategic Flood Mitigation Plan, but it's kind of a separate effort within each of these communities. So we think that would be a great opportunity and will likely go towards communities that have the greatest impacts from the disaster. So next, moving on to housing, two distinct programs. One is the Residential Flood Rehab and Resilience Program. This is a program that would focus on low and moderate income homeowners in the highest flood risk communities of Cook County, likely those most impacted by the disasters. It will provide owner occupied households with funding to do improvements to their homes, such as backflow prevention, other improvements on the property that would prevent future flooding in that, on that property. The next program for housing, as Susan mentioned, there's a great need for safe, high-quality, affordable rental housing. So the county wants to allocate approximately $50 million to new construction of affordable rental housing. Again, this would be directed at low and moderate income renters of Cook County, and it would be located in places that are resilient to future flooding. Finally, the last category is infrastructure. The county has proposed three distinct programs. The first mentioned here is a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. So following the disasters, FEMA allocates what are known as hazard mitigation grants to communities, and they have done that through their typical process. But there is a requirement for local municipalities to contribute 25%. The CDBGDR funds are eligible to use as match for that, so that could cover those communities required 25%. There's about $37 million in need there. So we hope to use some of this funding to help communities cover their, their local match requirement. These are projects that are, you know, as the name says, this is to infrastructure to reduce hazard risk across Cook County. The second program under infrastructure is a very generally described Community Flood Infrastructure Improvement Project. The county is allocating $100 million towards this. This will be funding that is allocated by the county for infrastructure projects, sewage, flood management, infrastructure retention, other similar types of projects that could reduce flood risk in the neighborhoods and communities that were most impacted by flood, the flood disaster. As I mentioned before, this will be informed by the strategic countywide plan. And lastly, under infrastructure, the county is allocating $20 million towards infrastructure that supports the new multifamily rental housing that I mentioned earlier. Oftentimes, there's private, you know, housing developments, but on the public side, there's a need for infrastructure to connect that to the broader grid. So this would be categorized under infrastructure. It would be in support of the multifamily affordable rental housing that is planned under this grant as well. And Susan's going to wrap it up with some information about timeline.
So the next step, as you might recall from the action plan roadmap, we spent the last several months doing our own form of outreach, reaching out to our partners in this work, reaching out to communities, reaching out to individuals. And we are here now with a formal public comment period, which will provide you an opportunity to let us know in person as well as online what your thoughts are. We'll then incorporate that information into our submission to HUD, which we expect to submit at the end of August. And then statutorily, HUD has about 45 days to review and reply, although they may be running a little behind. We're not certain, given all of the layoffs their agencies experienced. And then, so hopefully, we'll hear back from them in October. And then that will allow us time to actually fully develop these programs and projects and launch them in the early part of 2026. So now, this is your part. As citizens of Cook County, we ask that you send us your comments. If you like it, great, you can send us those too, or your suggestions and ideas to the email. And I'll read it because it's a little small in print. Or you can take your cell phones and scan the screen or scan either screen, online or in person. And that will take you to our website as well, where you can leave comments. And the comment period, as I remind you, is open until the end of July, at which point we'll then collect all of that information and get it ready for submission, according to the schedule we just outlined. So we just want to thank you for your time tonight. And we're happy to stand and answer any questions or concerns you have. Are there any questions online?
If you have a question online, please feel free to go ahead and raise your hand, and I can ask you to unmute or feel free to add your question into the chat as well.
I'm just trying to figure out what exactly, how does this affect your businesses? Does it affect businesses at all?
Well, according to the data that HUD has us collect from the SBA and other insurance companies, there doesn't seem to be an unmet need for businesses or for economic development type programs. But it doesn't mean we won't do one if we hear strong enough interest in that. As you know, there are many programs that the county has right now for small businesses that are funded under ARPA. And those, those programs are still open. They're probably just processing the folks that have applied for them. But that funding is good till the end of 2026. So, but if you have some specific needs that you think businesses have not been represented or we need to know about, let us know. I will say, we do need to show, we do need to be able to prove that whatever that need is, has a tieback to these two disasters. So it had to result from the 2023 and 24 disasters.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Will a [inaudible] family be eligible for this support?
I do not know. That's, that's one that we would have to ask our funder, and only because I think it changes quite frequently. And I wouldn't want to give you misinformation. Good question, though.
My next question is in regards to affordable housing. Is there, what are we determining to be affordable housing? Like, for example, within our communities, there are a lot of rural households that kind of experience different forms, experience different forms of that natural disaster? I'm so sorry. Which one do you want me to do first?
You were talking about affordable housing. You were talking about affordable housing and what qualifies it as affordable?
Yeah, so essentially, would it, what would be considered, so for example, in our communities, there's a lot of mobile park homes. They experience a natural disaster really differently, for example, for me. What would that support look like?
So it's interesting. We had a very similar project under our current disaster recovery grant in Wheeling, Illinois, which is northern part of Cook County, and there was a mobile home community which flooded and actually became dislodged from its foundations. And so in that situation, we actually offered buyouts for the people who lived there. And, but what happens when you do a buyout is, means that the land cannot be built on again because it's a flood plain. So people, but people were able to take their funds and find other housing. We also did some relocation using HUD dollars too.
We have an online question. Will the housing development be required to include open space or other green infrastructure requirements that aid in resilience?
We don't know. We haven't designed it yet, but that's a great idea. We'll have to see. You know, every housing situation is different, and I think I'll just, I'll just leave it at that because we want to make sure that when we design it, we're taking into account what, not only what's needed, but what the community desires. So it often will depend on the community in which it's located.
Another online question. Can a municipality apply for more than one of the funding categories, i.e. infrastructure and housing?
Yes. We'll have to follow all the local rules, however, you know, zoning as well as entitlement to land, and then also the county's process for selections.
Here we have another online question as well, or comment. In mitigation planning, as green infrastructure may require buying out homes and/or businesses, and therefore tax revenue, is there an opportunity to include in planning efforts recreational economic development to aid municipalities in generating tax revenue to offset property tax loss? If there may be some.
Could they explain specifically what they're referring to there? I haven't, in my mind, I think I understand what they mean, like an amusement park possibly? Is that what they mean, something like that?
Emily, would you like to explain further that comment? Feel free to go ahead and unmute yourself. Thank you.
Yeah, just thinking about if more open space or natural areas are created in, in an effort to, for flood retention, is there opportunity to think about the recreational economy, i.e. like bike shops, other types of planning that would, would aid in creating outdoor opportunities for municipalities rather than just property tax revenue in areas that might flood? So kind of building on these open spaces that might be created in order to retain flooding water. And sorry, it's six forty, so I'm not explaining myself really well right now.
Yeah, I would say we're, you know, we're open to working with whatever the community wants and what their needs are. You know, every, every neighborhood, every community may be different, so I, I don't want to answer a blanket statement when we're going to look at it case by case.
I just want to make a quick point, that all of the comments received now and during the public comment period will be documented within the updated version of the action plan, and HUD will want to see how the county is responding to any comment that comes in. So all of this will be documented. I think we're getting some excellent comments that, you know, we will consider and now think of as we further develop the programs. So the comment about open space, great comments. We'll consider that as we, you know, kind of hone the, the infrastructure program and the housing programs. So that's, that's great. Thank you.
There's another one?
Yeah.
I'm just so sorry.
No, it's good.
Do we have an idea how a buyout will be determined, and if the resident will have the power to say no? And how will that affect them?
Currently, the county is not contemplating a buyout program with this funding. I believe you funded it under your past DR grant, but, but no buyout program is, is being considered right now. So there would no, there would not be buyouts of residential properties.
And for online participants, are there any further questions or comments? Please feel free to raise your hand or put the question or comment in the chat.
Going once, going twice? Okay, well, you know, our information is included. If you scanned that QR code, you'll have all the information of how to reach us, by email, by phone. Cheryl Cook, our deputy director for community development, is here, and she's happy to receive your comments as well. So please let your friends, neighbors, fellow businesspeople know about this opportunity. And if they have questions, please encourage them to send them in the next few weeks, especially. Yes, Cheryl's email address is cheryl.cook@cookcountyil.gov. Now, a lot of Cooks in there. So first Cook, cheryl.cook, has an E on the end. At cookcountyil.gov, there is no E on Cook County. So I want to make sure we receive your information. Thank you for joining us this evening, and thank you again to the village of Cal Park. We look forward to working with them and our other communities in the Southland and the Westland in particular. Thank you.